Dean?
I'd like to welcome everybody to our annual Landscape Awards. This is something that has been sponsored by the Planning Commission and the city's Tree Advisory Board. Tree Advisory Board has seven members, and their chairman is Jarrett Morris. And we also have Steve Blue here, who is our city forester, and he's here representing that board. But what happens every year, and we look to do it in the fall, which is a good planting season, is to recognize projects that contribute to the built environment in Salina. And so, we have had since 1994, an ordinance that requires for certain commercial or office or institutional projects that front yard and parking lot landscaping be incorporated into a project. But even though, in some cases, it's required by the city, there are certain locations where they go over and above the minimum requirements and really make a contribution to the appearance of the city. And the Tree Advisory Golden Leaf Award is the one that the Tree Advisory Board selects themselves. And so, we have categories this year. Tree Advisory Board Golden Leaf Award. We have a Design and Maintenance Award. The city is really trying to encourage zero escaping with the use of low water-intensive plants. And we look at businesses or locations that do landscaping voluntarily. And we just got done talking about gateways, and so we especially want to look at gateway, entryways into the community. So our first category or nomination is from the Tree Advisory Board, and this is for the Sunflower Bank corporate offices. And we go back to the year 2003, where the Planning Commission was working with South Ohio Land Corporation. And they own 146 acres on the south side of Schilling Road, just to the west of Ohio there. And they worked with the Planning Commission to lay out 146 acres, and the plan there is to have an office park, business park uses along Schilling, and industrial uses farther south. What's notable about this is we have 1,000-some feet of frontage on Schilling, and a lot of the lots are separated from Schilling by a large drainage ditch, and Sunflower Bank is one of those. And they occupy about 4.7 acres out there. And they started construction in April of 2007, finished up in December of 2008. They are the second lot out there to develop, Kennedy &amp; Co. being the first. And they have a three-story building out there that contains 78,000 square feet and three floors of offices. They have 268 parking spaces out there. They have a very extensive front yard area along Schilling Road, and also have done quite a bit of plantings around the building there. I think one thing that the Tree Advisory Board noted was that the zero escaping, we've really tried to encourage looking at warm season grasses like buffalo grass. And probably of the projects we've had experience inspecting and following up on, this property probably has the best stand of buffalo grass that we have seen on a new project. And again, the advantage of that is that the buffalo grass does well in the warm season, whereas the fescue would tend to need to get lots of water to stay green. So for appearance and water conservation purposes, we really wanted to take note of this project. And so, we want to recognize Sunflower Bank as owner, and we have Alyssa Foth here to represent them. Jeff Gillum of Jones Gillum Architects was a designer, and Dan Fiorello was involved in the landscaping installation and maintenance. So at this time, we'd like to recognize the Sunflower Bank, Jones Gillum Rens Architects, and Dan Fiorello from Earth Care. Our next category that we have is in the area of landscape design and maintenance. And this is Salina Dental Arts, which is on South Ohio Street. And this is in an area that's known as Oak Park Village Shopping Center. That area was constructed in 1975 and 1976. And in 2005, Odontology Building LLC purchased what was the J.P. Roth Clothing Store on South Ohio. And their plan was to divide the building into two offices, with the west or front part being occupied with a dental practice. And that was Drs. Ferson, Ritter, and Barth. And they'd be in the west half of the building. And then, the east half was going to be devoted to Dr. Bycroft's oral surgery practice. And the Planning Commission's involvement dealt with parking, which over on the other side of the building, the east side, where there's an alley back there, there was some property that was purchased by Dr. Bycroft to provide additional parking, as a medical or dental office has a greater parking need than a clothing store. So after the parking issue was addressed by the Planning Commission, they started work on renovation of the building, both on the interior and the exterior. And so, what occurred on the outside was this area, which is in the southwest corner of the building, this area was expanded and enhanced. We've got shrub roses and other low-growing shrubs, new turf grass, some ornamental grasses there, and then a very creative and attractive sign, which gets your attention. And so, this was nominated because of the belief that of all the streetscape along that Oak Park Village area that this had with these renovations, become the most attractive streetscape in that portion of South Ohio. So as far as that project, we would like to recognize Barton Bycroft, who started that process. And also, we have Jason Barth in Salina Dental Arts, and we have Gary Arpin, who's been involved in both the design and maintenance. Our third category that we're looking at deals with the topic of zero escaping. And the project that was nominated here is Logan's Roadhouse Restaurant, which is out on Riffle Drive. And the Riffle Edition out there dates back to 1996, when the Planning Commission first looked at the layout and plans for that area, and it has developed lot by lot over time. But in September of 2008, the Planning Commission reviewed a proposal for constructing a 6,500-square-foot restaurant building in this location, out on Riffle Drive, adjacent to I-135. And one thing that we would note here is that the designers chose to orient the principal entrance and facade of the building towards I-135 and not Riffle Drive. So if you're out there, the rear or back portion of the building actually faces the street with the front entrance, and the principal facade facing I-135. There's also a large detention pond off to the south of this property. This property has a little bit, because of the two driveways and the fact that it comes to a point out on Riffle Drive, they're slightly less than the required amount of landscaping area along Riffle Drive. But they chose to put seven trees out there on the Riffle Drive side, and then distributed other plants around the building, and also on the west side, next to I-135. What they chose to do here was they used fescue grass on the east, on the Riffle Drive side, as a more formal lawn area, and then the remainder of the site, again, was planted to buffalo grass. And that has taken very well, and has been well-maintained as well. So we think this is a notable contribution to that section, and presents a good image from I-135 for the community. So we wanted to recognize Logan's Roadhouse, and we have Justin Reek, an assistant manager here from Logan's, to accept on their behalf. We had design and engineering out of Brentwood, Tennessee, and our landscape designer was out of Nashville, Tennessee. But we have Dan Fiorello from Earth Care here, who executed that plan in the field, so we want to recognize him as well. The fourth category we have this year is for voluntary landscaping. And again, we have a zoning ordinance that requires for commercial projects, and even for some scales of additions or renovations, that front yard landscaping be incorporated into a project. However, in the C4 district, our downtown district, landscaping is not required. It's optional, and it's at the choice of the landowner, how they want to incorporate that. We're talking about a filling station building that was built on this lot in 1931, and that building operated as a filling station until 1943, and operated in different forms up until the 1960s as a filling station. And then during the 70s and 80s, it alternated between being vacant or used for some small businesses, such as beauty shops, used car sales, things of that variety. Back in 2004, Dr. Brad Stewie hired Jones Gillum Architects to look at a renovation of this building, to repair the building exterior and to return it to use. And as part of that, the roof was replaced, doors and windows were replaced. There was general cleaning and reconstruction of walls and restoration of stucco exterior. Those renovations were left, and the building was still vacant until recently. And then after some environmental mitigation occurred in that area, the project moved forward with the interior renovation, as also some additional aesthetic features on the outside. So if you envision this back when it was a filling station, it was concrete border to border. And so, now we've had concrete removed and grass areas returned in its place, planting areas were established. There are two shade trees and four ornamental trees that were planted, along with evergreens, low-growing bushes, flowering shrubs. I don't know if you can tell from the photographs very well, but if you've been up close, there are stamped concrete paving stones there, leading up to the front entrance, which is a great aesthetic improvement there. And I think what we want to note and recognize here is that this was a voluntary effort, not required in the downtown area. And the work that's been done here by Dr. Stewie and Costello Company, as well as Matt Wagner, who worked on the landscaping, has created an attractive corner on the edge of downtown. And maybe this is a first step towards additional redevelopment in this area. So if they're pioneers in redevelopment for this area, I think we want to give a note to Dr. Stewie and Troy Vansel from Costello Company. And was Matt, Matt, you are here as well, so we want to give credit to Matt Wagner as well. So you've got a plaque for each of them. Troy takes no credit for the landscaping, but he will for the concrete stone papers. The last project we wanted to take note of is also voluntary, and that is a project that occurred out on Magnolia Road and South Ninth Street. And the Coronado Council of the Boy Scouts of America was established in 1910, and this year is observing its 100th year of service to the community. And Salinas Troop One is one of the oldest established Boy Scout troops in the United States in continuous service. And partially as a result of that observance, the local Boy Scouts completed a community service project where they planted seven shanah clear pear trees out on an area on Magnolia Road that the city had identified as being in need of some enhancement. We had actually applied for some different categories of grant funds to get assistance with the design and planting of materials here. That grant request was not funded, but we did have a local Boy Scout troop that stepped in and has contributed to this location. So in addition to the trees, as part of the commemoration of their 100th anniversary, there was a three-foot-by-five-foot monument sign created from carved limestone block. And that has been put out there, both to commemorate the project and the 100th anniversary of the Coronado Council. So again, this is a gateway into the community. It was an area, if you recall that area, there was pretty much just a bare area between the frontage road and Magnolia Road. We have enhancements across the street. The former Green Lantern, now Casey's Store, where they did some landscaping across the way, and this helps the north side match up with what was done on the south side better. So we want to recognize this as an aesthetic contribution to this gateway and to the community. And the other thing we would note is, in addition to what's occurred out here, this coming weekend, the council will be hosting a centennial camp near the Salina Bicentennial Center to celebrate the scout organization's 100-year centennial. And so, we want to recognize these Boy Scout troops for their contribution here. And I think we have representative of the Boy Scouts here to receive those plaques. So that would conclude our presentations for this year. We would ask Planning Commissioners, Tree Advisory Board members, even members of the public, if they see a project in Salina that they think was particularly well-done or well-maintained, to bring that to everyone's attention, and so we can get that properly recognized. But we thank all who participated this year, and I hope everyone will give a round of applause to those who--
Yes, congratulations to all the award recipients, and thank you on behalf of the Planning Commission for making Salina a better place to live. Item number two, approval of the summary minutes from the regular meeting held on September 21st, 2010.
I'll wait for a second, then I'll question.
Okay, is there a second?
Second, I'm scared, though.
Okay. Been moved and seconded to approve the summary minutes from the regular meeting held September 21st--
When I say a question, you get scared.
2010.
On the motions, a couple of motions, especially dealing with the property out next to the Elks that we talked about, the river, whatever it's called. The motions don't really include all that was discussed to be part of the motion, I think. Where will those be noted?
That's a good point. And in particular, we have found that the motions need to be pretty concise on reading back, that we have accurate descriptions of what was talked about. So let's talk about those in specific--
Well, yes, I think Dean and Alyssa had a pretty good accounting of what was to be included in the motion, but I didn't see it listed in the minutes themselves.
This deals with which item?
Basically, one of the things that came to mind as I was reviewing these last night is just the discussion--
The veneer motion.
--about the veneer motion, and about the use of the private drive for busing was something. There were other issues, but that was one of them that came to mind. And we're going to note that in the motion, so that there was no question later on, I believe.
Okay. The way that that is usually addressed, and we can go back and take that here, it is, it says, "We approve the plat application, including the requested variances to the private street standards with the conditions recommended by staff." What you're suggesting is that the minutes be modified, so that those conditions are listed out for inclusion in the minutes?
Maybe because later on, two or three years from now, would that be the permanent record we'd go to, to see exactly what--
That, and what we do for every case like that is that we do an approval letter that says that on this date, the Planning Commission met, they voted to approve your replat, subject to these itemized conditions and spell. You don't always get to see those letters, but every case where there is a motion to approve, and you have something that says, "With the conditions recommended by staff," we take those more specific items, and we put them in an approval letter, which is much longer and more specific. But we can certainly do that with the, incorporate what is in that letter into the minutes as well. So both of those, the approval letter and the minutes, serve as the permanent record of that. But we can modify those motions. And what that would be, if you look at page four of your minutes, Mr. Kennedy stated, "I move reapprove application, PO 34B, including the requested variances." Those dealt with the paving width and the curb radius on the street, the lack of curb and gutter. But the conditions would have related to things like adding a note to the plat to ensure that, there's a note on the plat saying that access for emergency vehicles, trash trucks, school buses are provided for on the private street, that those accesses won't be restricted. So what we can do for purposes of the minutes is just state with, instead of with the conditions recommended by staff, taking those with the following conditions and enumerate those in the minutes. I think that'd be important, because this recently came up with the development over on, help me out, Magnolia and--
No, Schilling in Ohio.
Schilling in Ohio. That had to do with what the action was on the preliminary. And in the context of how that was important, the, Mr. Kennedy remembered the motion being one way, and I was not at the meeting. And anyway, it'd been nice to have that record to refer back to that was accurate. Yeah, that, in that case, that was actually, the motion and the conditions were actually in the staff report for the final plat, what the conditions were on the preliminary plat. It was actually, the number of entrances that were approved was actually spelled out in the report. But what I'm hearing, and what we can certainly do is, as opposed to the shorthand version with the conditions recommended by staff, saying with the following conditions and enumerate those in the minutes. I hate to create more work for Alyssa, but you can see from a standpoint of needing to look back at some point that that might be important.
Dean usually fills that part in for me, so it's more work for Dean.
All right. Well, with those modifications, there's been a motion to approve the minutes and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None being-- What we will do is, at your next meeting, we will bring back the September 21st minutes on your next agenda, put those in there with the listed conditions, let you look at that and say, yes, this is what the format we'd like to see. So I wouldn't consider these minutes approved until you see the listing of those and say this reflects what we understood, so. Very good. Okay, item number three, comprehensive plan discussion topic, property maintenance code. We talked a little bit about the study session, and about a wide variety of the whole concept of what blight is and what influence that has on a neighborhood, and we asked questions like, are abandoned and temporary or deteriorated buildings, are those, you consider that blight? Inoperable vehicles, overgrown vegetation, lack of overall maintenance, like clutter in the yards or peeling paint? And there was a consensus among those at the study session, that all of those constituted blight. What this discussion, and you can see from your staff report, that there's a lot of discussion in there about historic districts and conservation ordinances, and a lot of this originated with the Salina Heritage Commission to look at places. We have three historic districts, and we have struggled at times to get a minimum level of maintenance achieved on some of the homes within the historic district, in order to keep them up to par with the other efforts in the historic district. The other item of concern for, not for every building, but for buildings that are notable, either from their history or their architectural contribution to the city, is that it was agreed that there would be an unfortunate situation if it got into a particular owner's hands, and they were able to allow it to deteriorate to a point where there was no choice but to demolish it. And so, we called out there that there is a minimum maintenance requirement for structures in a historic district. But we have had only marginal success, and we've occasionally achieved voluntary compliance. But there are some weaknesses there. It doesn't specifically enumerate or identify what the prohibited conditions are that constitute deterioration or constitute blight. And the enforcement procedures, if somebody doesn't agree to maintain to a certain level, are rather weak. So two things that we looked at with the Heritage Commission, and later with the Planning Commission and City Commission, were what's called a demolition by neglect ordinance, where if it appears that a property is simply being neglected and deteriorating beyond a certain point, that the city can step in and order some duty to perform maintenance. But that's limited primarily to historic districts. And then the other concept that was discussed was a citywide property maintenance code, which would apply to historic and nonhistoric neighborhoods, and would apply to both residential and commercial buildings. So we went into quite a bit of detail in our report here about demolition by neglect. Both Topeka and Wichita have demolition by neglect ordinances. Wichita's been a little more aggressive with theirs, but again, they have mostly used it to get voluntary compliance. They've not taken a case to court or anything, or even used city funds to step in. But demolition by neglect ordinances are limited to, the idea is you're trying to catch a house or catch a structure before it falls into the danger of structure category, where it has to be demolished. So usually, an ordinance like that will have specific standards that you can measure a property against. It has clear notice and action procedures. It has an economic hardship provision, that if an owner can demonstrate economic hardship, they can get additional time. Obviously, the ability to appeal a determination that maintenance work needs to be done. And the goal is to try to protect the historic research or resource that's been determined through research to be a valuable contributing structure to the community. through research to be a valuable contributing structure to the community. And obviously, fines and court orders and liens and things like that aren't as effective as actual work done on a structure. An alternative to that, that we discussed a little bit in the study session, would be a property maintenance code, and that would apply across the board to all buildings and structures. And in general, it looks at both the exterior and interior of every premises and structure and requires that it be maintained in good repair. And the idea is, again, to not have what occurs on a property have a negative impact on adjoining properties. So, a property maintenance code would serve the same function of protecting historic structures, but also apply beyond that. But it's, like I mentioned, is broader in application. Presently, the city has a minimum housing code, which is chapter 18, but it deals with things like plumbing, ventilation, windows, heating, minimum amount of space per occupant, things like that, that are all dealing with what is inside the dwelling. A property maintenance code deals with those things, but also deals with exterior conditions. And so, it would not replace a tall weeds and grass ordinance or a junk car ordinance or an outside storage ordinance itself, but it is a model code that's been developed and is designed to work with our other adopted codes. We have an international residential code, an international building code, an international fire code, and the international property maintenance code is designed to dovetail with that. So, what are the purposes? To protect the character and stability of structures in the city, to correct property conditions that are likely to affect life, safety and health of occupants, to prevent overcrowding. In other words, if a house has three bedrooms and those bedrooms are small, there ought not be 12 occupants. It sets aside minimum square footage or areas for how many occupants. It provides standards for maintenance of existing buildings, and of course, the overall goal is to preserve the value of land and buildings through the city. So, we think that if you look at a property maintenance code, that's going to clarify what the city's expectations are to property owners in the area of providing safe, sound and well-maintained conditions for all buildings and not just housing. So, it does go beyond that. And so, the demolition by neglect ordinance, there are examples of those, and we've shared those in the past with the Heritage Commission. That is one option that you could ask us to follow up with additional information about those and how they work, or skip by that and go beyond historic districts to a property maintenance code, which we could review the provisions for that at a future meeting if you're interested, or based on your observations, you could recommend that no ordinance creating an affirmative duty to maintain historic or nonhistoric properties be adopted at this time. So, what we see, I guess, is that we have a minimum housing code, but a property maintenance code would be a minimum housing code plus, plus ability to deal with those exterior issues. And so, like some of the examples or the photos that we had from the study session, you've got well-maintained properties over here, you've got properties that have reached a point that's so severe that the only choice is demolition, either voluntarily or a city ordered demolition through dangerous structures. And then you've got the properties in between that are not necessarily unsafe or unfit for habitation, but are unsightly or a negative influence on the neighborhood or next door properties. And the purpose of a property maintenance code is to address those properties that are in the middle, that haven't gotten so far that they're not habitable or they're structurally unsafe, but they're not maintained in the level that the community or the neighbors expect. So, we didn't go into great specifics either in the study session or the minimum housing code report here, but if you were to choose option two there, we would follow up with the actual text of that and a study session on the specifics of that for you to make a recommendation. And the one thing that you should remember about model codes is, model codes get adopted all the time, but they get adopted, even our existing codes, with local amendments that are tailored to the specifics of that community. So, if we come back with the outline and specifics of a property maintenance code, any model code can be amended, supplemented, deleted to address the specifics of a community. But I think with that, we'd be open to any questions that you had, but if your direction was that you'd like to learn or see more specifics about property maintenance code and how it stacks up specifically with what we have today, then we'd bring that back to you for your consideration.
Do you need a motion for that, Dean, or just consensus?
I would like a motion on that, but if there's any questions or discussion, but if not, then if your idea and there's a majority that choose option two, then we'll get that out to you and we'll get a, something scheduled, and we'll have the building official, Paul Curry, here to help us, who's very familiar with that code.
First of all, does everyone understand the differences between the demolition by neglect provisions and then also the property maintenance code?
I assume that number two includes the demolition by neglect.
It has elements of it that include that, allowing the city to intervene before it gets to that point. And I don't know, Aaron, you had some discussions with the Heritage Commission, what they thought about it, but obviously, their interest is the historic districts, but did they see some value in the property maintenance code as well?
Oh, for sure, yeah. I think we were all in agreement. I mean, I think they thought it was a great idea, citywide.
You know, I like the idea of that option number two also, but there truly are some people that probably couldn't afford it. Are there grants and things available for, I mean, that's, you're going to come across that, we just can't force this on everybody. But what is the option if somebody truly can't afford to repaint their house?
Well, there are, and there are limited funds in that way. We have access occasionally to CDBG, Community Development Block Grant Funds, and the fund has been limited because of budgetary constraints, but prior to this year, we had budgeted $75,000 that for individuals who are income eligible can get grants or assistance through the city to make specific repairs. But the emphasis on that, there's a prioritization, and obviously, health and safety things like replacing broken furnaces or things like that take a priority over appearance things. But you are correct that you can write a code and you can put an economic hardship provision in there, but an economic provision hardship that's not backed up with some source of funds to address that just means that if you don't have sufficient funds, you don't have to comply, and then the situation doesn't get addressed. So, we can explore the things there, but right now, we're limited to competitive CDBG funding and our local program, which is not really geared up for those kind of repairs because we're trying to keep people in their homes if they have a failing roof or a failing furnace or things like that, and wouldn't address necessarily painting or reciting or things like that.
I like the fact that it dovetails with the IBC elements.
Yeah, it is meant that the references, and Mr. Curry is more, better prepared to discuss the family of codes, but that is the idea that you have a group nationally that designs these codes to dovetail together. And so, there is a family of international codes, and this is part of that. There's even an international zoning code that has some elements into it that are worth looking into as well.
Well, is there consensus on the board? Dr. Hodges?
Yes.
Mr. Birdsong?
Yes.
Householder?
Yes.
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 I think those are all yeses for number two, is that correct?
Did he want a motion?
So, we've got, we have three things on our plate here that we see is that, one is that we'll take some of the things that we talked about in the study session, we'll just call them enforcement activities. We'll put all those together in a list and let you look at them and prioritize them from your perspective. We will bring back to you a list and a map of what we have identified and the comprehensive plans identified as gateways, to make sure you, everyone agrees on what are the gateways to Salina that have emphasis, and then we will, what you should look for is probably emailed out to you, like a packet would be a draft of the International Property Maintenance Code untouched, in other words, the model code, and then you can look at that and write yourself notes or questions in a margin or whatever, and then we will schedule that on your agenda for discussion, but with a background staff report. But we'll probably send you each a copy of the draft model code, just so you can see it and look at it and write yourself notes and get a feel for what all it addresses and doesn't address, and we'll do that sooner, and then we'll send out a cover report when it's actually on your agenda.
Great. I think it's a great step forward. Okay, item number four, other matters.
Four other matters, we will meet on the 19th, and we're going to talk about storage sheds again, and we will also bring back the plan for Marymount and Crawford with our full review of their site plan and some suggested possible revisions for that. Dustin went out and confirmed basically that the trunks of those trees basically straddle the property line, so they're like a half and half, so the fire department missed it by that much. But one of the things we'll suggest is the elevation we saw there showed a hard screening fence along the north boundary, and we don't see any reason to erect and maintain a fence between this and, we don't need to screen the fire department per se if you think that those trees already provide a good buffer if they're maintained. So, we'll get into the particulars of the plan. The neighbors have been notified, they've been sent copies of the plan and elevations and all that, so they can review those in their own home. One thing we would note is that a couple of the owners initiated a protest petition and collected a bunch of signatures, but what they were protesting was C2 open zoning, and the proposal that's before you is for Plan C1 with a specific plan. So, we're going to tell them that petition doesn't mean anything now that we would have to have some certainty that the people that signed that are also objecting to this plan, because that was open-ended, this is a specific proposal, and we can't know for sure that everybody who is against open C2 is against this plan. So, we'll clarify that with the neighbors. We also wanted to note that October, the 23rd, is Saturday, is Make a Difference Day, and there'll be various volunteer efforts, particularly in some of the North Salina neighborhoods, where there'll be paint donated, there being a number of dumpsters from Salina Iron and Metal donated and placed at strategic corners and locations, and there'll be volunteer groups picking up trash, tires, people that maybe want to get rid of stuff but don't know how. And so, there'll be some additional information about that, but for those who want to roll up their sleeves and put on gloves, from eight to 12 on October, the 23rd, there'll be different, there'll be some church men's groups, there'll be some different service teams and city staff out trying to clean up some of the neighborhoods on a volunteer basis on that date. And on November, the 2nd, we will have the plans for you to review on the Donna Cave Veneer Children's Center proposed for the corner of Ash and Oakdale. And that is a planned development district to patch a number of lots together, create a campus for that for a number of service providers. So, you'll be reviewing the plans and having a public hearing on that on the 2nd of November.
I just have a question that's not related to any of this. The sidewalks, the new sidewalks that have gone in all along Schilling and Ohio?
The multi-use.
Right, right.
Trails.
Is there, is there any room, not on the street side, but on the opposite side, for tree planting or not?
I would imagine on Schilling and some of those, it would be pretty tight. The city did put in some street trees on the Ohio portion there, but you generally have to be really strategic with that, make sure if we relocated some utility to get it behind the sidewalk, so that the sidewalk, the extra width, didn't interfere, then you can't come back and plant trees over that. We can look at some of those cross-sections, but on the Ohio section, there's been room for benches, trash containers, things like that, so there might be room for ornamental type trees.
Okay.
But we can, we can look at what we have available there, but for most, Schilling's a little different because it's a three-lane road and the paving's not quite as wide as a four or five-lane road, so there may be some room there.
Okay. It just is, would be such an enhancement in that long strip of pavement.
On Ohio over there, we have 60 feet of right-of-way, which is 10 feet more than we normally would have, so that there's extra width there to work with, but that will not, on South Ninth and some of those other cases, there may not be room. But we'll mention that to the engineering staff and see if they can work some of that in. But there has been improvements put in on South Ohio and the way of benches, waste containers, things like that.
Today, I saw three men running abreast on that sidewalk, and it was just wonderful to see that they're out of the street and with plenty of room for them, and they were visiting, and you could tell that it was a...
Shocking to see them running with a breast.
[laughing] Right.
Healthful activities in Salina.
Yeah, right.
Where are we adjourned?
He's running a dog, he's running a breast.
Fifty-two minutes.
[laughing].